Good evening, everyone. Thank you. To open proceedings tonight, we have Father Peter O'Leary from the Belgrade Lindstram Catholic parish. Thank you, Father Peter.
I guess Australia Day makes me stop and ponder the blessings we have. And we're a very lucky country despite the various problems in that. But I think we need to be congratulated on the wonderful country we're delivering. And that thought about, I guess, that means congratulations to the Catholic Church on the wonderful work out there in Kangaroo, Man. Think of the traffic lights there. (Laughter). And I think it's a very scripty thing, let your light shine at first, maybe. So, Father, we give you thanks for the wonderful work that is continued and undertaken every day. We give thanks to the members of the council that they give their time, their effort and their energy. And they spend time thinking about the development, the infrastructure, health and safety, and many other issues within our community. We pray that you guide them with your wisdom, that their natural goodness would always be to the fore, that all their judgements may be fair and just and reliable. We pray for the citizens of the municipality too, that they may be fair-minded, that they may be supportive, and that they may encourage development that is in the best interest of all. And so we ask that you bless this council, the members, bless them and their families, and all the citizens of the community. Keep them safe and keep them well. We make this prayer through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Father Peter. And before proceeding, I'd like to acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional custodians of land on which we meet tonight, and pay respect to all who've passed and present. Advice at this meeting is being audio visually and will be available on the council website. Thank you. I declare the meeting open, and there's no apologies. Item two is confirmation of minutes for the meeting on the 11th of January. As circulated, be taken as written confirmed. Alderman Chong, thank you, Alderman Thirley. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. There's nothing to report, item three. And item four is that council notes workshops for the 18th and 25th of January, and the agenda briefing of the 29th of January. Thank you, Alderman Pierce. Second, Alderman Cusick, I think. Put the motion, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Item five is declaration of interests, or Alderman or co-associate. Alderman Campbell? It's item 11.3.11. 11.3.11. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I just noticed that I'm not obliged to declare an interest. I have actually filed a declaration of interest notice in relation to that same matter.
Are there any other declarations of interest? Thank you. Item six, tabling of petitions. None on the agenda, or only from the floor? There being none. Public question time, there are no matters on notice. Are there any questions without notice from members of the public? Jim? If you could say who you are, please, and then...
My name is Stephen Gertie. I'm a resident at Lorddale, 2x7 South Armagh, Lorddale. I'm just wondering if the council could give us an update with the communication between the state government and council in regards to a... Sorry. Footpath between Rokeby and Lorddale on South Armagh.
Be able to assist in that matter at this stage, or take question on notice?
Sure. You can also take a question on that.
Happy with that?
Thank you.
There's another question?
Mayor, my question is directed to Alderman, Mr. James. We... the article in the Mercury on the 22nd of January this year. Is it true belief that the Minister of Rainhitting, as well as the Police Commissioner Darren Haines, are not capable of making an objective decision? My personal opinion is that you are trying to undermine their judgement...
I'm sorry, but it is an opportunity to ask a question, but not make a statement.
All right. Well, I would like to know what the Alderman, Mr. James, thinks in regard to the question that I have, whether they are capable of making an objective judgment.
Alderman James, do you wish to reply?
Well, thank you for the question. It is quite frustrating at the moment because we have received communication from the Commission of Police, and that's been supported by Rainhitting, the Minister for Police and Emergency Services, that it's inappropriate to have a pathway across police land, or across police academy land, because it may interfere with the training and it does provide a risk to when police undertake their training and practices in that area. The article that appeared in the paper was to try to get the Premier and the members of Franklin to consider the matter, and to see if they were willing to reach a compromise in relation to this. In other words, a suggestion has been made that there could be a fencing on the western side of the boundary of that private property, that abuts the police academy land. And also, in the case of when an activity is being undertaken there by the police, that they have the opportunity to close the land off, or prevent the access or people using the access to the foreshore. That was in the letter that was sent, that was communicated to the paper last week. And as a result of that, it would appear that the Commission of Police and the Minister for Police and Emergency Services are quite steadfast in their belief that there should be no access at all across the property, regardless of any limited access or fencing on that western boundary. There is one avenue available to us, and that is to approach the Premier and Franklin members to see if they would consider this matter. And that is where it comes in.
Thank you, Alderman James. Any other questions from members of the public? Thank you very much. Item eight, I understand there are no deputations?
No, there's none.
Thank you. Item 9.1, no submotions, Alderman Chong?
Thank you. I'd like to know if the notice of motion is given in the agenda?
Thank you, Alderman Farlane.
Thank you, just very briefly. Obviously, electric and hybrid vehicles are becoming much more prevalent as people try and move to a potentially less fossil-fuel intensive vehicle. In the same way that, you know, we may not even top up with petrol or diesel, we may need to top up with power in these. So this report request is really just to look at the installation of suitable charging points. Now, they could be up to council, they could be in conjunction with service stations, shopping malls, there's a whole variety of places where they could actually be, where they're the most appropriate. And what I'd like council to do is produce a report looking into the possible options. As you note in the motion, there is no timeframe on the report request. Obviously, with the budget process coming up, I understand that the staff who might undertake this report could be busy. I would hope that the report could be completed as soon as possible after any budget commission. I think council's work...
Other speakers, Alderman Dows.
Mr. Mayor, I'm intrigued with this motion, and I started looking at it, and I fully support Alderman Chong's motion for a few reasons. Nissan, Mercedes, and Saab have already have over 30 charge points for electric vehicles. Tesla, the electric car manufacturers, is stalling out a total of 16 superchargers stations between Alderman and Brisbane, and they plan to be up and running by 2016. And that any Tesla electric vehicle owner can have free charging for the rest of the life of their vehicle. In Western Australia on Saturday night, it was on the news, you might have heard it yourself, they've just opened what they call the Electric Highway, that is between Perth and Maple River, and they've got five charging stations. When I say a charging station, they've got a service station, and they've got probably 10 or 15 charge points. So there is a growing number. Now, the problem with electric cars is they're still in high prices. Now, but if you think back, when TVs first came back, a 15-inch TV, I think, was £3,000. I knew a chap in the early 70s who bought a state-of-the-art computer, which is now an accidentary, and he paid $30,000 then for something that would be absolutely worthless today. Now, the rapid fall in cost of batteries is expected to make electric cars more competitive. Now, Alderman Chong referred to SITD, their various areas. Now, in Victoria at present, unless I've always noted, public available electric vehicle parking bays are subject to the same rules and regulations in normal cars. However, some parking bays allow no standing or parking unless the vehicle being parked is electric and plugged into a recharging. Maybe that's one consideration this council could have. We could have certain pump parking bays with the charger already there, and people... the idea is they say, so plug it in, go shopping, come back. Now, up to the moment, you can charge up to 100% of your car capacity, your car, in about 30 years. And that usually with these cars, that gives them a run of about 270 kilometres. The electric car makers, at the moment, Audi, BMW, Ford, Honda, Kia, Mercedes, Mitsubishi, Nissan, Porsche, Tesla, Toyota, Honda, Citroen, a few of the vehicle manufacturers. And there's a lot more than that, who are just purely electric car manufacturers, not motorcar. And whether we like it or not, we're going to see this coming on, like computers came on, like TVs came on. This is the technology of the future. Now, the advantage is you've got home charging points. And now, all the things you can get installed in your home, a wall charger. So you bring it home, charge it in, go to bed, wake up, it's fully charged. You don't have to go to a service station to get any fuel, just out of your own electrical grid. You even make it yourself if you've got solar panels. Now, I think this is going to be far, far... come in far faster than people think. With all the people complaining about climate change and fossil fuel emissions, and pollution touches, you've seen the Big King and Shanghai and Kumbi home places, where this Jakarta with all this huge, huge amount of pollution. One day, they'll be saying, you're not allowed to have a fossil fuel emitting car in our urban areas. Maybe for long hauls, but not in urban areas. So, from that point of view, I support the motion. Also, Professor Lu of the University of Western Australia says that that is... electric car technology is increasing every day. And he states that it's like the chicken and the egg. You get more cars, then you've got more charge points. When you put more charge points in, then you get more cars. So, I don't know, maybe faster charging stations will solve this problem.
Thank you, Alderman Walker.
Knowing how collegial and respectful we are of each other, Mr. Mayor, and I mean that most sincerely, I doubt debate is going to descend into a, if you're not for this motion, then you hate electric. If you're not for this motion, then you hate the planet. It's not going to be like that. It is going to remain civilised, and that's something that we should be thankful for. The question, you know, I guess, that comes to mind is, is it a case of public money for private benefit? And generally, clowns has a good record in not getting down that path. And we do need to think about that also in the context of, you know, are you going to do dedicated parking spots that are unlimited for an electric car versus another car? And again, that is, I guess, a general subsidy for an individual benefit. I guess it's probably important to note that in Australia, that most of the demand and innovation for electric cars is coming from very densely populated councils, where electric cars, in many cases, aren't owned by individuals, but are owned by car-sharing entities. Flip that with the likes of Bristol City Council, which has spent £1 million installing 100 charging bays, including four rapid charging points. And according to that most august media entity, the Bristol Post, usage of the charging bays was averaging less than once a month. A press release from Yoshahiku Tanaka, who's the deputy chief engineer of Toyota, reported that electric cars are only viable if they travel short distances. He said, if you were to charge a car in 12 minutes for a range of 500 kilometres, for example, you're probably using up the electricity required to power 1,000 houses. And that totally goes against the need to stabilise electricity use of the grid. He believes that the best way to charge is overnight, and then use only for short distances through the day. Poor air quality caused by traffic congestion is a significant issue for many cities, but I'm not sure it's a first-order environmental concern in this municipality. Furthermore, I think council does need to be wary not to be perceived as picking winners. Perhaps a focus on bus transportation might be considered a more pressing issue. I guess, by way of a bit of personal research, I spoke to a householder who were the second or one of the early people to get a Telsa in this state. And at their expense, they installed three bays power into their garage, and it wasn't an awful lot of money, but it does mean that then, again, the car gets charged overnight, and it's ready for use for the short trips during the day. And by short trips, they can actually get all the way up to the Spirit of Taz, and get the ferry over, and have plenty of juice to pull into the parking bay at Richmond. You know, I guess, something to think about is that in cases like Telsa, it's private sector enterprise, not ratepayer-funded bureaucracy that is rolling out charging infrastructure across the nation. And, you know, there are some hotels in this state that you can check into the hotel and charge a car. I know in Manchester there's one, so you can watch a Hawks game if you're into following teams with winning form, and your car's ready to go the next day. I guess, in summary, as currently drafted, I'm not comfortable with the motion, even if I'm not comfortable with the intent. Staff time is ratepayer money, and given the results of councils such as Bristol, local government's history in this area has not been altogether stellar. And that's not to say that local government should have no role, but I think strategically, if any such research is to occur on this process, that STCA is better placed than one southern council in isolation. Were the motion to be changed at the beginning so as to read that STCA be requested to consider and report on the potential for installing charging points for electric vehicles around southern Tasmania, et cetera, et cetera, I believe it could be more strategic in nature, less human resource intensive for the council, and I'm pretty confident it would end up with a report of higher currency and wider usefulness.
Thank you, Alderman Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to pick up on Alderman Walker's last comment in relation to STCA, because I believe it's a regional matter, and one best that should be dealt with by the STCA. You can look at it in this way, is that if Clarence is to go alone on this, then really you would have an isolated instance of perhaps having a number of these stations installed in Clarence, but nowhere else within the Greater Hobart area or beyond. So why would you even at this stage determine that it's best for us to at least go ahead and seek a report and find out the information that's available when in fact a regional council perspective and investigation ought to be their province? It's a couple of interesting things that Alderman Dows made, and he said that technology of the future, and he made mention of that on the basis, I think he means that it's the way to go. And I agree with him. I think it is the way to go. But at this stage, I think it's premature for us to even to be able to spend some dollars of council's monies, to be able to go ahead and investigate this when it's been done in isolation to the other councils of Hobart, Grinorki, et cetera. It was also mentioned by Alderman Dows that Melbourne has a number of stations that are up and running. And I don't think you can treat Clarence and Melbourne as being a situation where Clarence ought to follow suit now with regard to these stations being installed in their busy areas, when they have the population and the actual usage of these vehicles, and pairing it to Clarence, with its 55,000 residents, and nothing else is happening in the Greater Hobart area. The other factor that comes to mind is, it could be perceived by the public as being seen for the big end of town. It doesn't identify, in my view, with the lowest common denominator. If we are able to join with the other southern councils to investigate this, and this is where I fully support where Alderman Walker is coming from, by that nature of having that particular, well, it's matter, dealt with by the Southern Tasmanian Councils Association. Because we contribute as members of the STCA, so we are putting money into this particular matter, whether it's done in conjunction with the other councils. So I'm not opposed to it in the longer term, but in the shorter term, I think it's premature, and we should have a motion going to STCA by means of our contribution, which we make annually, for them to be able to take it on as a holistic group of councils and to support this application. I cannot support the motion at this stage.
I too did an investigation in relation to electric cars, and learnt for myself, Dr. How, they are going to be the way of the future and the advantages that they will bring to the environment. VW have 14 electric vehicles, but they're bringing none of them to Australia because unfortunately, our government lags behind every other nation in relation to embracing the idea of electric vehicles. And even impoverished Greece offers incentives for people to buy clean vehicles. I understand that within council, we have an officer who is particularly ideal for this sort of report, and I understand he has an immense interest in this area. This is a way of actually utilising an already existing resource that we have within the council. And there is nothing wrong with council actually showing initiative in this regard, and not necessarily concede that whilst it may not be supported by government, it actually should be an initiative driven from the local government side. I support this initiative.
Sorry. I take that timing apart.
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah.
Any other speakers?
I wasn't going to speak on this, but when I was away in Europe in August last year, these charging points for numerous cities around Europe, including the Scandinavian countries, and I wouldn't think it was any great effort to get the technology from them. Only barely a geolocation and a special language transfer in some cases. So I think that we're not up for a major cost to actually explore this. It's all been done happens there, and there were banks of four cars in the normal parking banks, and that was plugged in. It's a pretty simple arrangement, and eventually it will get embraced in Australia.
Other speakers? Alderman Vamretto?
Through you to General Manager, what sort of amount of hours are we looking at for the report? What sort of hours are we looking at for a report?
Look, that's a... yeah, it's not something I've costed out in that regard, but I would anticipate it's something that someone would certainly knock over in a week. It would be comfortable, so...
Alderman Chong?
Just a couple of things I'd like to answer. The subject came up a couple of times about STCA and about us potentially going it alone if we're looking at this. My understanding, talking to an officer who's very involved in this, is actually a number of the other councils are quite a lot further down the track of looking at putting charging points in. And actually, we are, if anything, a laggard in the southern region, not leading the charge in that sense. And I guess the other thing I would like to point out is the argument that perhaps we don't have the dense population, perhaps we don't have the pollution. But that doesn't mean to say that we should wait until we do have those things before we start to look at what we can do from this day. I seek council's support with the motion.
Motion for chair is as put by Alderman Chong. All those in favour? Against, carried. Item 10, reports from outside bodies. 10.1, Southern Tasmanian Council's authority, the December quarterly report's been copying Refuge Disposal Side Joint Authority, Alderman Campbell?
Yes, I have the annual report of Southern Copan Refuge Disposal Authority.
Thank you. Southern Waste Strategy Authority, Alderman James?
I was only able to attend the meeting on Thursday, so I will wait the next meeting to have the minutes and the agenda.
We have the Tasmanian Corporation, the quarterly report to the Honours Reps, the 31st of December, is in the... Thank you, Alderman Thirley. If you're moving that, that be received?
I was going to ask a question.
We need it on the table first. So who's moving it, sorry? Thank you, I'll second it, Alderman Farlane. Did you want to speak, or second it? Alderman Thirley, I think it's your turn.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's a public meeting at Lorddale, and it's noted in here that the board was going to explore the alternative forms of security and to present a recommendation to its 28th of January board meeting. I'm just asking, did that result?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I haven't heard an outcome of that, but I do know I was speaking to CEO of Taswater about a fortnight ago, and he was in the midst of still preparing an options paper for his board for that meeting. So I will pursue it with him to try and find out whether there was any resolution.
And we'll get a note coming around the week...
...in relation to the cave-in. Yes.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Put the motion, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Are there any other reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies? Alderman Thirley?
Good comforting.
Any other reports, Alderman James?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I did make a correction today to include advisory committee in here. For some reason it hasn't, but it has. On the minutes of the meeting that was held on the 8th of October 2015, I do have the word advisory included in that, but I didn't have it included in the agenda for the meeting of the 3rd of December 2015. And I'll be tabling this, and also draw council's attention to the ongoing discussion that we're having with regard to Rocky Tom, and also the question...
and also the question that has been raised tonight under the public question time, the ropey Lordedale track. I believe there's still more to do on this. We are well aware, and I know my colleagues have received a letter from the Division of Police stating that he will not provide support, and that's for public access across the land. I might add that people currently can cross it. People can actually walk across the Police Academy land at any time, for day or night. But that hasn't been a matter of discussion between the minister and the commissioner. So, look, there's still a little bit of work to do on this. It does look good for us. You know, there is a political stick to this, I might add, but that's my opinion. And I think that at the end of the day, okay, it might be security, Alderman Douse, but at the same time, we've had petitions, we've had even a couple of people tonight make the suggestion with regard to access and opening up that section of the foreshore from rope B to Lordedale. So I'll table the minutes and the agenda of the 3rd of December, and I might add that I have confirmed those minutes because they were duly carried and passed at the last meeting.
Alderman Thirley.
Through you, Mr Mayor, can I just clarify in relation to the grounds of the Police Academy? There is a sign on the Police Academy that says you are not to be there other than on Police.
Can we take... Yeah, okay, we'll just... Procedure, if we're not in a space where we can do too much in that, but you've got your point.
Just remind my faltering man, Mr.
Look, can we put these questions aside until question time at the end of meeting?
No, well, that's only two questions that pertain specifically to this, which is what is the... Is a committee like Tracks and Trails subordinate to council and/or not? Is that the highest authority maker and decider, or is it a council around this chamber? Because I'm getting confused.
Well, clearly, the council is the authority. The committee is an advisory committee, as Alderman James pointed out.
Can we re-remind the committee perhaps, or at least the committee chair?
I think the point's just been made. Are there any other reports?
Mr Mayor, can I table the minutes of the Richmond Advisory Committee?
Thank you. Are there any other reports? Thank you. Item 11.1, the information in the weekly briefing reports for the 4th, 11th and 25th of January noted. Alderman Campbell, thank you. Second it, Alderman Cusick. Questions? Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, my question is directed through you to the acting manager of asset management, Mr Graham. Mr Graham, in the weekly briefing report of the 18th of January 2016, page 2, Tasman Highways, Derwent Highway Dissection and the opening of the upgrade slip lane, has council got a view, an opinion in relation to as to whether, once the slip lane is opened, that it will reduce the amount of traffic on the Agonia gravel section of the road, council road, given that up to now, because obviously the slip road, like, hasn't been... More traffic is being channeled through the gravel section of Agonia. Are your people aware that or have an opinion in relation to the reduction of that traffic on the gravel section of Agonia with the opening of the slip lane?
Through you, Mr Mayor, I know the council officers do not have an opinion on this, but this was raised before the work was undertaken and so traffic was done on the gravel section before then. Should we be intending that helping council be taken, repaid again after it was completed? So that might be...
Question then is that those information in those reports, they noted, all those in favour? Against, carried. 11.2, determination of petition received, there's nothing there. So I now advise that council intends to sit as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approval Act. Item 11.3.1 is a development application at 41 Glow and Drive Oak Downs, Trent Out Building. Alderman Pierce, second it. Alderman Cusick, thank you. Any other speakers? The recommendation is for approval subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Item 11.3.2 is a development application at 33 Mornington Road, Mornington.
I'd like to add on that, there is a revolting recommendation that's been circulated.
Thank you, Alderman Pierce, do we have a second before you speak to it? Alderman Chong, thank you.
Mayor, revised recommendations, development application for building extension and signage at 33 Mornington Road, reference numbers such and such, everything subject to the conditions. We spoke about this pretty much on Thursday. The applicant now is happy, he's withdrawn the displaced structures that were contentious issue initially. They've withdrawn those, and they wish to proceed with the building extension and signage. So I think now I'm extremely happy with it, and I have council support the recommendation.
Any other speakers? Alderman Thirley.
I just wanted to point out too that even with the original proposal of the original motion, there were no representations received with this DA. But the fact that the alterations to the warehouse and the proposed signage are now satisfactory, the removal of what was originally intended in a temporary displaced structure has made this one of approval.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Alderman Douse.
Yes, I have a little displaced, and I went to the original standard of displaced signs up now, and they're moving just straight across the road. The displaced signs run a level ground, the next side, swing side, that's not really central for the displaced signs anyway. And it's just a matter of relocation of about 60 feet.
Speakers? Alderman Pierce, write a reply. Motion then is as circulated, approval subject to conditions, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Item 11.3.3 is a DA for 24 Seven Mile Beach Road, Seven Mile Beach, dwelling and building. Alderman Cusick, thank you. Alderman Pierce, care to speak to it?
It's the same, Mr Mayor, it's a single dwelling in our building, on a block of 4,320 square metres. That's a big block, one building, so council support.
Thank you, Alderman Pierce. Other speakers? Put the motion then for approval subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.4 is a development application for 15 Derwent Laken Road, Targo, change of use to visit accommodation and renovations. Thank you, Alderman Farland. Second it, Alderman Von Bette. Would you care to speak to it, Alderman Campbell?
Yes, Mr Mayor, within the context that we're very short in rental accommodation in Clarence, and I think this is a way of being able to provide some very intimate and personal style overnight or short-term accommodation, and we should be promoting this rezoning or permission that we need to put in place.
Other speakers? I'll put the motion then for approval subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.5 is a development application at 9 and 7 Tricada Place, boundary adjustment and three multiple dwellings. Alderman Pierce, thank you. Second it, Alderman Cusick. Speakers?
Then I went down to the site, look, I really have no trouble with the law. There was one objective, but I think the officers have answered those clearly.
Other speakers? Okay, approval subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.6 is a development application for 20 Wentworth Street, Delray, for four multiple dwellings. Alderman Calm, thank you. Alderman Hume.
I just feel that this is a really good example of infill right where we need it, really.
Okay. Other speakers? Alderman James.
Yes, the matter of the number of car parking spaces on page 120 of the hard copy, possibly acceptable solution is that number of onsite car parking spaces must be no less than the number specified in Table E61. And it's two spaces per bedroom plus one visitor spacing for four dwellings, total of nine. And there's only been two spaces per dwelling, internal and one external, and no visitor pass space for the site. I have read or have noted the officer's comments that the configuration enables business to each dwelling to park in the external space provided. And also, the site is just over 100 metres from Clarence Street, which is a major bus and has bus docks within the 200 metre of the intersection. My... I haven't got anybody here, probably is. Through you, through Mr Lovell. I'm just looking over there for Mr Lovell. Why is there a change in what has been stipulated under the acceptable solutions, warranting only two spaces, getting one external, when enormous as per acceptable solutions? Would you explain?
Through you, Mr Mayor, the acceptable solution is required, as you say. The acceptable solutions are there to allow any alternative to be proposed, and provided that it has satisfied the tests and the province criteria met, then you can prove that. And the officer's report provides some comments on why has officers proved this approach to relax the acceptable solution in accordance with the province criteria.
Are we to assume, or I would have preempted you would say, that every particular DA is just on its merits? But are we to assume that in other circumstances that there isn't any parking on on the large sporting areas close to the Delray oval and the site is just 100 metres from Clarence Street? That this is a means by which we are going to waiver or sort of relax our car parking requirements? When in fact, the acceptable solutions and what we have already specified in other development applications where we would normally stick to the number of car parking spaces? I just want to suss out from you, Mr Lovell, as to whether or not this is the exception to the rule or if it's just going to be something that we're going to take for granted.
Through you, Mr Mayor, actually, a bit of history of how council's built this. First, under the previous planning scheme, it was two spaces, seven, eight, so it's traditional with the last floor. The new scheme had been in that long to test how many capacity there was in various actions, but I call at least one or two, at least come to council at least times which involve a reduction beyond the car spaces. There's a certain risk, but I mean, that's what I call this question with the report, to judge whether or not the extra spaces are required or whether alternative arrangements like the value of the street car parking, the proximity of alternative laws and transport and so on, make up for that.
Well, I think we have to be very careful here of them seeing pick winners. I still think that if you're going to apply our... And you said it, your own words was that, that we have a new planning scheme, it hasn't been tested. And I just think that if we're going to seem to be consistent, that I think that we need to be a little bit more direct in our car parking provisions as because it may be perceived as giving a benefit to one and not to others. So it looks...
You're addressing the chair, not the...
Yeah, okay, okay. So I cannot support the recommendation.
Thank you, Alderman James. Are there any other speakers? Write a reply.
This application is a clear example of eighty-one evil. This type of area is in an area that's well looked for, and people would want to come and live in this area, particularly in smaller accommodation units, which they can afford considering the size of the houses in this particular suburb. So I have no doubt that we're going to see a lot more of these, and at the moment, they fit the planning scheme, they address everything from a sustainable outcome, and we need to support this.
Motion is for approval subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour? Against, carried. 11.3.7 is a development application for 67 Melana Road, Lindisfond. Alderman Chong.
I'd like to move an alternate recommendation, but the application do refuse.
Do we have a second, please? Alderman James, thank you.
The original proposal for this new dwelling required six variations, where it did not meet the acceptable solutions, which I think is probably somewhat of a record. I don't remember one where we had to make six variations. In this particular motion, I want to focus on two of them. 10.4.2, figure, particularly in relation to the privacy of the adjoining house in 12 Boater Street, where the proposed rear veranda looks straight into the lounge room of number twelve. So there is no other view from that proposed depth than straight into the lounge room of number twelve. As you can imagine, this reduces the amenity and privacy of the neighbourhood significantly and reduces the capacity of anyone living in that place to enjoy views after the villa. Secondly, E661, P1 and E67P1 in relation to parking. Anyone who's travelled along this road and tried to get in and out of Boater or Melana realizes how difficult that parking and site distances are in this area. Whilst in theory there may be ample parking, the reality is there are regularly cars parked on both sides of the road and the verge already. It makes it very difficult for people to access safely. The lack of recorded accidents probably only means that no one's been injured enough to warrant calling the police, not that there haven't been a number of near misses or bits of cars. In the report on page 143, it was commented that the number of visits would increase with two dwellings, but the current situation would be maintained as visitors for the current dwelling park on the street at the moment, and on this basis, wouldn't be any more parking spaces. Now, for me, that doesn't make any sense. If you've got people living in one house, their visitors park on the street at the moment. You add another house, and there's visits. You're going to end up with a lot of people parking on the street. Because if you already don't have enough parking for your visitors on the property, when you fill in that available space, you've then potentially got three lots of people parking on the street in an area which is already really overparked and quite dangerous. If you sit on the road at any time and look out, you can see how much difficulty people do have getting out of their driveways because of the number of vehicles that are parked around the corner. So in summary, I believe this application does not sufficiently comply with these two particular acceptable solutions, and I would seek council support in rejecting it.
Thank you. Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I actually went up and knocked on the door at number 12 Boater, and the lady was home at the time, and so I took the liberty of actually looking over her things into the property in question. And I believe if you haven't been up to have a look at this, then really and truly you ought to, Mr Paul. You really need to, because at the end of the day, this particular development is on the corner of Boater and Melana. It's hilly, there's really difficult access to it. It's for an existing and another dwelling, and it just, in my view, and okay, I'm one of twelve, it just doesn't add up, it doesn't tick the boxes, and I'm very, very surprised why it has been recommended for approval. I'll just dwell on one in particular, and I know Alderman Chong has made reference to a couple of others, but the one in particular...
a couple of others, but the one in particular that really stands out for me, and I made a comment, and we discussed this in the previous item on the agenda, and that's E six six, E six point six point one A one, number of car parking spaces. The acceptable solutions, two for each dwelling, and one dedicated visitor car parking space, proposed four, no visitor parking space. It's also noted that car parking space five, as shown on the plan, does not, obviously, does not comply with Australian standards. But that is just one issue that really stands out, and it makes, in my view, a mockery when we are looking through these particular issues and looking at acceptable solutions, and then going to performance criteria, and then by the very nature of what the acceptable solution has identified, just on this particular matter, it doesn't comply, it's not in accordance with Australian standards. Now, that sends out, or signals alarm bells, Mr Mayor, as far as I'm concerned, when we have a development in the city which does not, and for this particular reason, does not comply with Australian standards, nor does comply with the privacy provisions under ten point four point six. Look, I don't need to go through these, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, identifiable under acceptable solutions, which do not comply, and which, in my view, do not make this a very good project for us to consider to approve. So I believe that every member around this circle, around this horseshoe, as I used to call it, horseshoe, should have really gone up the steps and even had a look at this. And I'm sure if you had a look at it, then you would support the recommendations of the Chair.
Yeah, I support Alderman Chong's motion. I went up to her and spoke to the lady next door and had a good look at the, and having lived around the area for many, many years. And one particular setback is the, is on page one forty, where there's required setback two point five, the setback requested is point nine. I mean, this is, what, thirty-six per cent of the required setback, traffic flow and parking halls are a major problem around the area.
Alderman Walker.
Yes, Mr Mayor, thank you for that. I believe that the representative's concerns are sincere, and they are tangible, and they are something we need to dwell on, but we have to take a lot of factors into consideration when we make decisions. There are six points. Unfortunately, planning isn't a treasure hunt, and you don't get, you don't get extra points for the levels of discretion, whether they be only one variation or whether they're six, and we need to be mindful of that when it goes up to the next level. I must also point out, and I completely agree, that Boater can be a very, very busy and very congested piece of road. But when we talk about that piece of road, we're talking about the block between East Derwin Highway and Malana. Once you go from Malana to Corolla, it is a different story, and it's also a different story with sidelines. I'd also draw council's attention to some of the recent subdivisions we've done in that area, especially on that narrow bit of Malana between Lincoln Road and Boater, and some of the things that we have, without batting an eyelid, you know, happily filled in two or three places. So on consistency, I think there's far greater issues with parking on that section of Malana Road than it is with, with the, you know, this bit around Boater. So they're things to bear in mind, and I guess, I don't, I suspect this motion will be successful, but if it isn't successful, then I foreshadow moving the motion as originally tabled in the agenda.
Thanks, Alderman Walker. Other speakers? Alderman here.
I'd just like to put questions to Mr Mayor, offering you, Mr Mayor, to Mr Lovell. First of all, the proposed, in addressing clause ten four two, performance criteria three, the proposed opaque glass, I presume, given that that's to stop the window from looking directly into a lounge room, as Alderman Chong pointed out, that that would have to be too sufficiently opaque to prevent views, but just allow sunlight, is that... Okay. And also, can I just clarify that the, there's a reference there to, it says there's four parking spaces provided, there's a reference to parking space five, is that because the fifth, there were five parking spaces, but the fifth one is encountered because it's not just rated down?
Through Mr Mayor, that's correct.
Okay. Look, I have, I have similar concerns to those who've spoken in favour of Alderman Chong's motion about this proposal, but when it comes to planning matters, the planning scheme is fairly clear, and we do need to take a compassionate approach, I believe, to, look, first of all, the acceptable solutions, and where there is non-compliance with the acceptable solutions, we then go to the performance criteria. And the question here is, for the six acceptable solutions this proposal doesn't meet, doesn't meet all of the performance criteria, and I am satisfied that with the conditions that propose to be imposed on this development, that it does. First of all, the issue with the window, there's a condition requirement, opaque window, which would mean that, according to Mr Lovell's answer, there would be no view through that window, all that window would allow is the access of sunlight. As for performance criteria one in E six six one and E six seven one, the, while I can appreciate that the difficulties that others had with this proposal, the, there's reference in the report in terms of its compliance with those performance criteria to assessments by council's development engineer, and we need to trust the expert advice that's provided to council. And unless someone can point out to me that our experts have got it wrong, and, you know, present similarly expert advice to the country, then I have no choice but to trust the expert advice that we've received. So if this, if this motion isn't successful, then I will support Alderman Walker's, the officer's recommendation.
Mr Mayor, I would just like to point out that the worry about the egress and agress to this particular development should not be confused with the fact that that particular intersection is a shocker. This development is not necessarily going to affect that intersection as such, when the access is further up Boater Street, but it is a terrible intersection in the sense that the gradient is the wrong way, and it's a constant concern when you're going across that intersection because of the inability to see the traffic coming up Boater Road. So to not, to label this development as exacerbating that condition is probably the wrong thing to do. I've read through the report, I know the area, and I'm satisfied that this report will enable, should enable this development to go through. There's been the issue of privacy addressed, the number of car parking isn't an issue when you've got two per dwelling, and the applicant has advised they're willing to change the colour of the roof, there doesn't seem to be, to me, reasons to refute it.
Thank you. Alderman Bomberto.
Hi you, Mr Mayor, a question to Mr Lovell. If the refusal motion is successful, then it will obviously, if it's appealed, go to the tribunal, and initially, there would be mediation. What scope do we have in terms of actually being able to look at something that would meet the acceptable solution, or is it that we would have to?
Through Mr Mayor, I just get the stupid idea we haven't to satisfy performance criteria because of the nature of the sustainability changes, but the mediation process is only due to by the preparators of the parties to compromise. Traditionally, the way that we've approached it, and we're the health tenures here, is to sit back and see and see whether compromise could be acceptable to the other parties, who would be effective council party. There is great scope in the mediation process to reach something...
What I'm trying to get at is, is there scope for the, if you like, the appellant to actually move in relation to meeting the requirement, the acceptable solution? Can, can, is there technically the capability of that plan to be changed to let go to requirement?
Yes, through, 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 Mr Mayor. I guess I was trying to say that there is great scope, and of course, that means that the plan can be changed to a great, to a great extent, to the consensus of parties.
Other speakers?
A lot of people have given their opinion to this bad corner, but, yeah, I know it's not a great corner for traffic, but I haven't had any problem there. Looking at the site, and I mean, it's only a block of seven hundred and sixty-six square metres, so it's always small, whatever goes in there and the applicant wants to build, it's, you know, going to be a tight fit, and our planning staff have come up with alternatives. Now, I've read, was it, the objectors email that we all got, and went through it pretty carefully, but I think the officers are going to answer most of those things pretty well, because like Alderman Hume said, that it's a planning, we're in a planning committee now, in a sense, so we've got to look at things in that light. And I look at some of these objections, and I think, well, you know, yes, you know, there are minor things, but I think the officers have done a very good job to remedy, I really do. And when we talk about cars and whatever, we know, we know there's a few cars there, but also we know the reason, and the fact is, that some belong to a residence that's got a few cars, a few more than just a period. So in that sense, the only thing I've read here that really did worry me a little bit, and I don't know if the officers have answered that, is about underground springs. Well, I've never heard of water springs, I've never heard of those being in this area, but it could be true, but I think the officers have answered that one pretty well.
Other speakers? Write a reply, Alderman Chong.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I just correct something, which couples the Alderman have actually got wrong? If you read on page one hundred and forty-three, where it says the applicant is willing to use opaque glass in the bedroom window, that's in relation to the existing building on the site, it's not in relation to twelve Boater, which is, which is where the roof at the back of the building looks directly into the landroom of twelve Boater. There has been no suggestion that opaque glass would be put on those at all, the only opaque glass is mentioned is in relation to the other existing building. But I feel very much that the privacy issue is still very important, that actually, this doesn't resolve that issue at all, as it might look as if it does, if you don't take into account it's for the existing building. And I think because of that, it's important that we refuse this application.
The motion is from Alderman Chong, that the application be refused. All those in favour? Motion is carried. Item eleven point three point eight is subdivision application for seven thirty-eight Ocean Drive Tranmere, one lot subdivision. Alderman Cusick? Anyone wish to speak to it?
Thank you, Mr Lovell.
The motion is, the recommendation for approval. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Eleven point three point nine is a development application for three Begonia Street, Lindas Farm. Alderman Campbell, thank you. Thank you, Alderman Hume. We should speak. He speakers? Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I met with two residents who actually live in close proximity to this development, they are supportive of it, however, there is a matter that is not concerned to them, and I wanted to raise through you a question to Mr Lovell. Mr Lovell, the way that the development shares a common boundary, and there's a lot of children use that particular pathway, as well as adults, to get to the bus stop in Gordon Hill Road. What provisions can we make with regard to keeping that pathway clear of tradies, vehicles, and materials, et cetera, et cetera? Because the, the actual gradient of the driveway is on a steep section, and there's a large hilly area just to the east of the pathway. Do we have any power to provide a barrier to separate the pathway from the development during the course of the development, or is there nothing within our council's powers, thank you, to be able to provide a safe access for people users on that particular pathway?
Through Mr Mayor, I'd say that it's not a matter directly conditionable under this plan, however, it is something that could be addressed at the building stage, and if you wish to add any advice, it goes with the principle to ensure that we have, about the requirement of the time to, to do access to the user's car lane.
Does that mean, Mr Lovell, that we, that the officers would take this on board, given the questions being raised at council meeting, or is it something that we need to have formally included in the letter?
Through Mr Mayor, we would do that, in fact, there is a precedent, if someone wishes to use car lanes as part of the development, for example, to store, contain, and so on, get the licence from council, so it's part of our initiative to advise people, although we will, thank you.
Building site has to be contained, doesn't it?
Are you taking a rider requirement, or... Are there any other speakers? Okay, sorry. Definitely mayor.
It has got the, under building regulations, you've got to contain the site, and they'll, in their permit and workplace standards, will ensure that that, that site's fully contained.
Okay, the recommendation before the Chair is for approval, fifth condition, subject to advice, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Eleven point three point ten is a development application at thirty-one Gordon Saw Road for childcare centre.
Thank you.
Do we have a second, please? Alderman Hume, thank you.
Mr Mayor, this has been a discussion point for six years, which I think, when you have to take in detoxication, I guess that's the word, on a site, obviously, it was an empty tackle station for years, and of course, that always raises a question in relation to, has the turf, the under, under, growth, or whatever you call it, the base of this thing particularly made good and free from any harm that may occur because of the nature of this particular project? of this particular project that's before us? And the childcare centre at 31 Gordon's Hill Road, it's a growing industry, we just don't seem to be getting enough of them. I remember some years ago, we had an application down in Acton Road there, and we put them through hoops, and I remember at the time, the officers recommended for refusal, and we, at the time, a group of the council believed it was appropriate, and had a number of conditions, we recommended approval, and it got up. And that was a really tough issue because of the nature of the corner there at Acton. And the reason why I'm mentioning that, Mr. Mayor, is this is in a very strategic part of the city, and it's sort of at the crossroads, because there is a roundabout there and so on. But the officers have gone through and basically thrown the book, I use that in a term that's appropriate to this development, and have put down 16 conditions, and they, to my way of thinking, really tighten up and plug any, any holes and any, any particular problems that could arise in relation to this. So it's great to see something happening with the site. I believe a childcare centre in this area is close to a lot of government agencies, and there's a lot of mum's and, and obviously dads who have the care of children in this day and age, and so I think it's appropriate that we, we give it a tick in the box. It's interesting to note that my favourite subject in car parking has been raised here, and the cash in lieu of an amount of 96,000 has been identified under condition six. So that's a lot of money, a lot of money, but then again, if you look at the site and if you're aware of the site, Mr. Mayor, there's limited possibilities, I suppose, for car parking and sort of cash in lieu is the way we go in this regard. I seek counsel.
Other speakers? Alderman Walker?
Question, Mr. Mayor, probably through to Mr. Tui. Aside from family daycare, what's council's direct involvement in the childcare centre?
For you, Mr. Mayor, council's also involved in one of the childcare, childcare centres.
How many, how many children generally attend during the day at our childcare centre?
The childcare is around 38, on every three years.
We have adequate parking for staff and, and for the patrons. Although slightly inconsistent with what we're asking these people. Yeah, look, it's on the periphery of the CBD, and I would argue that there should be some discount for that than something slap bang down the middle of Bay Street, but I'm just one twelve, I want to see it go ahead, but I think we've been a bit heavy-handed with our car parking charge on.
Motion then is approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Alderman Campbell? 7.3.11 Clarence Intram Planning Scheme, consideration of representations received. Alderman Chong?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move the amended motion as circulated.
Do we have a second, please? Alderman Thirley, thank you.
Two alternatives circulated?
Are there two? The one signed on the bottom, Alderman Chong.
Can we see one?
I haven't seen another one. Okay, Alderman Chong, you have the floor.
Thank you. Before I talk about the proposed amendment, I should like to make some general comments about the report. Firstly, I think we should thank the members of the public government departments and staff who read and commented on the report, they are to be commended. The online version of the planning scheme is very complex, and it's nonetheless important that people take the time to study it and bring any comments forward. And I think we're very fortunate that we have a community that's prepared to do so. I would also like to commend staff who distilled the representations in outline and summary which is included in the report today. Not everyone who made a representation will be pleased with the recommendations, let's be honest, but I believe the officers have done an impressive job in collecting and considering all of the comments. If we look at the report, there are some 11 requests for rezoning from a variety of areas. In general, these have not been supported, not because they don't necessarily have merit, many of them probably do, but because they either do not have adequate supporting documentation, or are of a size, scale and occasion that is in the public interest, they should go through the normal planning scheme amendment process. Woodhurst Road is, I believe, an exception to this, in that it is, as stated in the report, a minor extension to an established residential strip, and was extensively supported by reports, including a planning assessment report, which provides incentives against state policies, Looper and the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy. The report particularly notes that the lot is of such low yield as to have no effect on the urban growth boundary, which was drawn to lot boundaries rather than the system development act. While seeking council's support for the amended recommendations, I would like to remind everyone, as always, that this Section 30J report to the Tasmanian Planning Commission is just that, a report to the TPC, and the final decision on what supports in the list of recommendations rests with them. But it's up to us to make a recommendation on what we believe is important in this report, and I would seek council's support.
Alderman Thirley?
I support Alderman Chong's amendment, and just wanted to consolidate in my mind what an urban growth boundary actually means, and it's a regional boundary set in an attempt to control urban sprawl by mandating that the area inside the boundary be used for high-density urban development, and the area outside be used for low-density development. 20 Regal Court is currently developed with the Royal Obergolf Club, and the land in question is located in the north-east corner of Seven Mile Beach Village, between the golf club and the existing settlement, and the rezoning specifically relates to 4,000 square metres, a portion of the site from recreation open to a village. The submission, as Alderman Chong had said, is supported by five substantial reports. The planning assessment report confirms that the land is relatively flat, and it's currently covered by a mixture of vegetation, but is currently used as the dumping ground for garden waste from the adjoining property, which is a common occurrence on hardwoods, bacon plant. The visibility of these blocks within the village zone is obvious, and existing roads, footpaths, reticulated water supply, power, refuse collection services are available, and the lots are suitable for onsite wastewater systems. The report addresses key considerations against state policies, and whilst it currently is just outside the urban growth boundary, it does highlight that the existing land tenure boundaries are not logical boundaries based on the existing development patterns. The submission represents an active rezoning that has much merit and should be supported by council.
Alderman James?
Mr. Mayor, would you prepare to take an amendment to include as, as one of these recommendations or amendments?
I can ask the mover and secondary if they're interested.
That is with regard to Kent or Joe Court, that's my suggestion.
I have a real problem with it, in the sense that, as I said, there are 11 active rezoning requests, and...
Okay, I'll take it that that's an O.
Yeah, that's an O.
Okay, if you wish to move amendment, that's now the situation you've got available to you, Alderman James.
I'd like to move that the matter as circulated regarding the Joe Court, which is referred to as 18 to 20 Kent Street, Lenders Farm, be included as a recommendation to the TPC.
Do we have a second of that? Alderman Walker, thank you. Okay, we now have the opportunity to debate the amendment, there's no right of reply to that, we'll take a vote on the amendment, and then resume to the original motion as amended or not. Okay, would you like to discuss the amendment, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The circulation of this particular proposal is that it was, the property was advertised along with other submissions as per the SIPS public consultation process. The land abutting the proposal is zoned residential, and rezoning of the 18 to 20 Kent Street falls into council's long-term plans of residential zoning of the area from Radiator Drive to Begonia Street, Lenders Farm.
Just as a procedural matter, Alderman James, for my own mind, this alternative motion that you presented has got a lot of words, can you actually tell us exactly what you're including in the amendment, please?
Well, I mean, including the 18 to 20 Kent Street as part of the proposal for rezoning to go to the TPC, and this is...
So that's the last bit in italics, is it? It's important that we get this clear, so that we know what the amendment is, that the submission concerning 18 to 20 Kent Street, however, is an appropriate site? Or are you saying be included?
A site to rezone from rural living to low-density residential, and that is part of the recommendation that I want to have included.
So if I can get that right, the submission concerning 18 to 20 Kent Street be included to rezone from rural living to low-density residential?
And also the reasons listed under... And the reasons listed, sorry, under Part B, in the reasons listed for that.
So if I can just be clear to all the ordermen here, on Alderman James's circulated motion, if we go to the bottom paragraph that's in italics, the submission concerning 18 to 20 Kent Street be included, to say cross out however is an appropriate site, and replace that with be included, to rezone from rural living to low-density residential, and then the reasons are included as well, under the reasons. Is everyone clear on what the amendment is that we're now debating? Okay, thank you, Alderman James, if you could continue, please?
And also, the property is within the urban growth boundary, and is also complementary of link to the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy.
Alderman Walker?
Yes, I note the outline from Alderman James, Mr. Mayor, and I would point out council's check of history in that area, and council's would appear determination that it becomes largely residential and this area becomes an anomaly to tidy up in that. Might not be strictly within the terms of the Intram Planning Scheme component, but philosophically, more land availability could stand the pressure for person buyers, and this is a perfect place for consolidation.
Other speakers to the amendment?
Well, I can't support this amendment in the context of the relevant argument actually stated within this proposition, and it clearly states that the land adjoins third-party land with similar zoning and characteristics, who have not been provided, who have not provided the support, and they have not been notified of any potential zoning. The statement above that from the staff states that the rezoning has not been publicly exhibited, and may be of public interest. So consequently, I find that this is not in the public benefit, and purely for private, private benefit.
Other speakers? Alderman Hearn?
Speaking on the amendment, I have, I have a little bit of difficulty, even, even if the rezoning application has merit for inclusion in the, and what we're talking about is whether council recommends that the rezoning has merit for inclusion in the new planning scheme, not whether it has merit as a rezoning application in itself. Those are two important distinctions, because there are issues like the like-for-like conversion, whether it's something that should be given the opportunity to public comment, et cetera. But even, even if it had such merit, the explanation that's included in the, in the comments that are proposed to be included in the report, actually retains the substance of what was already there, plus an extra paragraph. In other words, it goes through about five paragraphs explaining why the submission should not be supported, followed by a paragraph saying, but what the hey, we should support it anyway. And I, I have a bit of a difficulty with that, in that it doesn't really adequately explain to the Tasmanian Planning Commission why we would recommend supporting this particular proposal.
There'd be no right of reply on the amendment motion. The amendment is that the submission concerning 18 to 20 Kent Street be included to rezone rural living to low-density residential, all those in favour? Against? Amendment is lost. So we resume debate on the original motion. Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very difficult situation to be in, because we plucked Woodhurst out of the air, it was contrary to what like-for-like and what the planners had suggested, and therefore, up to this point, and the discussions in the workshop had been that we were going to pretty much take on board the like-for-like. What we've done now is we've picked winner. We have decided that Woodhurst needs to come out, contrary to the hard work of the planners, and the number of workshops we've had, and I haven't missed any of those, and we've discussed all these matters, including, not Joe Court, Kent Street, and now, out of the blue, we are going to decide, it was seen, because we haven't flipped the vote yet, that we're going to give a leg up to Woodhurst. It's outside the urban growth boundary, whereas the other one is within. There are a number of matters that the officers have made a comment on in relation to why this should not go ahead, and when it comes to the TPC, I can see it being a very awkward situation, as to why at the last minute, Highland City Council have you decided to pluck out one, contrary to the officer's recommendation, because it's all in the report, but what they will see, and how council has jumped the gun and decided to go and support one to the advantage of others. And Alderman Chong may have mentioned that there were many, many submissions that were of merit, and she, in her motion, Mr. Mayor, has said this one, for some reason or another, outside the urban growth boundary, hasn't been supported by the planning staff, or to get a tick in the box and give that particular development an advantage over the others. Now, I was prepared to step back and, and support Woodhurst, because I believe that the Kent Street proposal was within all of those strategies and planning provisions of council. The officers didn't believe that, or didn't think that was supported, although it ticked all the boxes. Woodhurst doesn't, it doesn't tick the boxes, and for some reason, we're giving this particular project a leg up, and it's unfortunate, because I would have supported it. And it's unfortunate because I would have supported Woodhurst and the Kent Street as part of this overall process of the representations, but I can't because it's giving an advantage to one particular party against a number of those other twirl that Alderman Chong said, where they had equal merit, and they were her words, or what is that, equal merit, and didn't get up. Is that fair? It's not fair. It is totally unfair why some particular developer at the last minute should get a leg up and does not. And I cannot support, Mr. Mayor, I cannot support this because it's giving an advantage to person and not to others.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman here?
I think it's worth pointing out, Mr. Mayor, that regardless of whether or not we support Alderman Chong's motion, supporting the report as it is going to the TPC is giving a leg up to some proposals and not to others. So the question is not whether we recommend accepting some rezoning proposals and, and not recommend others unless someone wishes to move a motion to say we accept them all or we reject them all. The question is what criteria are we going to use as a basis for that? What I'm, what I'm waiting to hear, I don't believe, I don't believe I've heard yet, but I'm still ready to be persuaded, is an argument as to whether on this particular proposal we should go against the officer's recommendation. The officer's recommendations on what we report to the TPC were based on whether the rezoning proposals are consistent with the principles the TPC put forward as to what should be included in a new planning scheme. It's not to say that these rezoning proposals don't have merit on their own, but the question is, is it something that's appropriate to be included as part of a new planning scheme based on those principles or is it really something that should be put forward as a separate rezoning proposal, giving the public the opportunity to, to comment? Because if we accept something that's really not in keeping with those principles, we have the issue that we're allowing someone to get an advantage by putting through a rezoning proposal through this process rather than through a rezoning application. The key question is where is it appropriate to do that? And I think the TPC's principles have clearly outlined where it is and isn't appropriate. And I think the officers have actually done a very good job in interpreting those principles when it comes to the, the comments on those proposals.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I agree with Alderman Yoon. On page two hundred and twenty-two, the general principles are actually detailed as to the development of SIPS two thousand and fifteen. And the two important ones, they're listed, one and two, in relation to this particular development, are the like-for-like and the incorporation of relevant provisions to reflect the requirements of the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy. And I agree totally with the officers in the recommendation that they have put forward. What they've actually said is that the submission represents active rezoning that has some merit, but it's got to be looked at in the context of the general principles in relation to the development of SIPS. And for me, the three dot points that are detailed on page thirty-three are what are important, that the rezoning does not represent, represent a like-for-like conversion of the CPS two thousand and seven, the rezoning is not necessary to effectively implement objectives of the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy, and the rezoning has not been publicly exhibited and may be of public interest. And in actual fact, what is recommended is that there is a different process followed so that there is actually a review of the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy and then that it can be looked at as far as an amendment to the planning scheme. So I cannot support this motion and I'd actually like my dissent recorded as being due to the change of the officer's recommendation because I actually agree with the rest of the recommendations.
Mayor, I actually support Alderman Chong's motion as I did support Alderman James's.
Knew this was going to, to come at some stage and here we've got a chance to add it in to the other things we're adding in, that we can say, no, no, because it's not like-for-like, it's not this-for-this, but, you know, this has been going on for probably eight years. We knew this was going to come. So tonight, we've got a chance to approve this motion, just tidy up a few things there as I would have liked to, to tidy up Kent Street, that's for sure. But to just leave it out while we've known about this for so long, to me, is, you know, not right.
Alderman McFarlane?
Well, to me, Mr. Mayor, the difference between Woodhurst and previous land use of Kent Street is in the context that we have actually assessed this area in a previous rezoning application, which was approved and the current dwellings on it came from that subdivision, might not have been the zoning. And within the context of that, I vaguely remember justification for not going ahead with the whole lot due to, I know we had a lot of flooding at that time, but we did discuss this very amendment that's being looked at now. We discussed that area previously with a previous subdivision. And so in that context, this change has gone through consultation. People have had an ability to address the issues in that area and I do remember within the Regional Land Use Strategy, the discussion about how the urban growth boundary would have a black fuzzy line, which enabled some anomalies to be taken into account. And so this is the outcome of one of those black fuzzy lines.
Right of reply, Alderman Chong?
Yes, I'm just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, I would like to, I guess, clarify one issue. The reason for this proposed amendment came about not because I had a desperate requirement to change one of the recommendations in the report, but because the officers themselves on re-looking at the information thought that perhaps it was appropriate to include Woodhurst into, into acceptance rather than a refusal in this report. And that was mentioned at the briefing on Friday and that was, although that's not what's in the agenda because that came out before Friday. And that, and that's certainly where this, this motion came from, the discussion with officers at the briefing on Friday. Yes, you can say we're picking up, potentially you could say we're not taking the winner into account, as I've said, and a number of people have said, this, this particular amendment has been discussed in a various number of guises over the years. I think with the consultation and the information that's gone out in the discussion about the new planning scheme, it's appropriate to change it.
Question before the chair is officer's recommendation with Alderman Chong's amendment to include Woodhurst Road. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried. Item, I could recall, recall the deputy mayor, please. Alderman James, uh, this, please. Item eleven point three point twelve is the Tasmanian Planning Scheme. Do you have any move-up for a recommendation, please? Alderman James, I don't think, moved Alderman Campbell, secondard Alderman McFarlane, thank you. Alderman McFarlane, would you like to speak to it?
Only in the context that we're halfway through doing all this stuff, but we might want to finish it and, and then try and work out where it goes.
Other speakers? Put the motion in that we provide an interim response to the minister. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. That concludes our business of the planning authority. Thank you. It's nothing under customer service, asset management or financial management. So moving on to governors, eleven point seven point one, the quarterly report to the thirty-first of December be received. Moved Alderman Campbell, secondard Alderman Chong. Speakers? There have been no speakers, but motion, all those in favour? Against? Carried. Eleven point seven point two is a review of the building regulatory framework that the document has endorsed as our formal response. Thank you, Alderman McFarlane, secondard Alderman McFusick. Speakers?
Only one comment, Mr. Mayor. I do think it would be good for the Alderman education to actually be involved in some discussion in a workshop with this kind of change. It, it helps with our decision-making process.
In the absence of any other comments, I put the motion, all those in favour? Carried unanimously and takes us to item two, Alderman's question time. There's no matter on notice, questions without notice. Alderman Johnson, Alderman Davis, Alderman Dows, Alderman McFusick. Any questions?
What's, what is the council's policy on water and recreation reserves and sporting grounds in, in periods of very low water usage and water restrictions?
I'm looking at my colleague at the back there, seeing if he can...
Look, can I provide a detailed response to that through the briefing report if I can?
Yes, now I'd like to ask, is the council putting in a submission for the National Stronghold Regions Fund and it's so, what for?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. At this stage, we don't have a project that we believe could be put forward appropriately in the sense that we've had officers go through the, the, to all the briefing sessions and the constraints around the project at the moment are such that we don't think there's anything that's at a particular point in preparedness or development to go forward because the advice we're getting is that projects have to have the funding allocated, have to have all the improvements in, in place, et cetera, et cetera. A logical project, I think that we would like to look forward, but clearly is not as such a preparedness at the moment, Seven Mile Beach Recreation Area. So we're currently in the process of developing a prospectus for that with a view to submitting it, I think, subject to obviously council's agreement, but to political parties as part of the run-up for the federal election.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question about Pass Road, obviously doing a lot of, which is, I think, works at the moment, but is there any thought about at some point in the future, given the, the extra load that's on there of widening the road, straightening it, doing an extra work on it?
May come through, it's a potential at those points, that's fine.
But part of the strategic plan for Clarence Plain. However, what is the timeframe for the skateboard park to open and as a, has a celebration-type style program is one being designed to fit some of the discussion we had at the workshops when we were upon?
Through you, Mayor. The Kent half is expected to be completed at the end of February or early March. Yes, there's a proposal to be, within special committee.
I've completed state and we feel that one potentially will be over the cloud, so it's not too much a launch, but there will be a test activity and consideration.
Hope it doesn't involve Alderman on skateboards, doesn't it?
Yeah.
That's an open question.
Alderman Thurling?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I was driving along Clarence Street the other night and noticed a, a mobile van, food van, parked near the takeaway. And I know this was an issue that was raised before because I understand that you can not really take up a permanent occupation in the public without a permit, so I'm not sure whether they have been granted a permit, but this has been going on for months. The question is, has the food van that's situated near the takeaway in Clarence Street permitted to do so, operate from that side? What's the... And that's on, on the private land which belongs to the shop on the other side, the pet shop, isn't it? The bike, yeah. This appeared to be on the road. This appeared to be parked.
Would you like to suggest what you think? I've been parked on the road, let's follow that one up, so I do...
I'll clarify that, but I've got a feeling when I turned around that I could see it wasn't in a car park, it was actually on the side of the road, but could have been the parking...
We'll have to follow up on that if it was on the, on the road, so.
Thank you, Alderman McFarlane.
Just another one question. I did have another one, but I think I'll hold that for another time. They can land next to the road, be trucked or, is that part of the truck or is that private land? Private, yes, thank you.
Yes, by way of tangential referencing, perhaps Alderman Tweed might like to consider, or that events committee might like to consider inviting She Shreds to be part of the festivities, the female skating group. It's been great to see the growth of that and...
So the question was, can we?
So the question gets tangentially to, because you can ride a skateboard possibly on a roadside bike track, how's the progress going with the roadside bike track? Road safety bike track?
Oh, yeah, um, rocks, yeah, the, 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 um, I'm not, I think it's closer.
Second question, have we offered or has it been requested by Glanorgan Spring Bay Council, given the deluge of water, for any assistance from neighbouring or regional councils?
I'm aware of any, thank you.
Those, those, sorry, through, Mr. Mayor, those requests generally come through LGA as a sort of coordinating body, but to date we've received nothing.
Yes, two questions. Firstly, Shane and Neil has received a response from yourself. Has that been circumstantial?
I can do that. Um, there was a, yeah, I think there was another letter just recently. Two altogether?
The two altogether. That circulated because Sheena Neal has raised a number of questions that weren't answered in her previous. The fact that it's circulated since Austin, by the way. The other, other matter is in relation to mobile signage at the intersection of the Tasman Highway and Holland Drive and at the airport. Any provisions under council's policies, bylaws to endorse any regulation that we may have in relation to mobile signage on that this intersection, close to it?
Free, Mr Mayor, in respect to the particular intersection you talk about, council has no capacity to enforce any controls in respect of that it's part of the state, state highway, state road corridor. The matter has been referred to DSG and asked them to further investigate. I know in discussions with DSG officers in the past, they also are somewhat constrained by their legislation in terms of enforcing that, but I will take it up for them again.
Red dragon signs are actually positioned on the fence line. There's about half a dozen of those. Is that different to what the state government has as far as its area of responsibility? Or is that where council's responsibility starts? Because this is on.
On private fencing, is it?
On fencing, yes. Signs, about half a dozen of red dragon, you see.
Well, we'll get them checked out.
Thanks.
Okay, concludes question time. So item 13 is closed meeting. Need a motion. Alderman Yoon, thank you. Alderman McFarlane, proceed your motion and all those in favour? Carried unanimously.